I'm sorry.
Let's get this meeting started, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight and gathering in person. Definitely strange seeing everybody in masks, but we're doing the right thing here, I believe. So if you would, Madam Clerk, call the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Paesnoff.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
And Mr. Stone.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we get started, I would entertain a motion to add an E to new business for Chief Myers to talk about a parade for the Fulton High School seniors.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Very good. Any objections? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. We'll move right into unfinished business. We have health inspection discussion. Bill, I don't know if you want Dennis to come up and talk about that?
So last time we met, we kind of briefly discussed the city repealing our health ordinance and turning it over to county. We briefly talked with the county a little bit about it, and they seem to be on board. We haven't had a formal sit-down meeting with them, but they seem to be on board. When Bill and I first started talking about this, contacted the state, and the state gave me a list of cities that had health ordinances. If a city doesn't, then it falls back on the state unless there is a county health department. So I think Bill and I both feel that, you know, we still have the same safety inspections with the county. It's not something that we're just giving them and they haven't done before. So they currently have a safety inspection that they do on all the county restaurants.
Well, kind of what we brought up to the council was the thing because the county does. Did you feel for this, there was any strong feeling opposed to this, and if we don't hear any strong opposition, could we begin negotiations or discussions with Kentwood as to specifics of tightening, basically? Like, can you come up with some ideas to what would be the best time? You know, we've been, the county health department's been pretty busy past much, and so we've really not pursued it. But I think a lot of us are slowing down somewhat now. I think you have to ask more time and just like begin to talk about it.
So is our inspections a duplicate of effort? Are we inspecting for exactly the same thing, Miss Shawnee?
Yeah, it's all based on the state regulations.
And do?
It is. We are both inspecting for the same thing, but if we inspect it, the county is not.
Okay.
We are not both inspecting restaurants in the community. Right now, the county does not inspect anything within the city limits.
Okay.
Do you have a fee for this? There'll be a fee.
Sorry, ma'am.
Will there be a fee for this?
Uh, right now, the county charges a hundred dollars for a tablet.
For you.
For you. We don't have a permit.
And the enforcement is the same?
It would be up to the county.
Well, I mean, if we inspected, our enforcement would be the same as if the county were to find the same thing? Or is there a difference?
It's, um, I think it will eventually be thought of reverse discretion, depending on the mood and the attitude of the inspector at the time. It could have some variance in, uh, variance in what you see of the right.
Okay.
In theory, though, the city of Fulton would come up with an identical inspection with the county inspector.
And we would have, and if, we would have the same enforcement power that the county inspector would have?
We do, we do want to come to health inspections in town right now.
Okay.
Is it inspected more often if we do it here in town, or is it?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Just once a year?
Uh, Dennis, would they take over, like, the state hospitals, public schools and all that?
Yes, they would take over everything that we currently inspect. The schools, churches, restaurants, the colleges.
And if you work and deal that, when do you plan on starting?
We haven't got to that.
That's what we'd like to talk to Kentwood about is to, the schedule, would be involved in implementing this in the transition.
We would definitely ease into it and work with them. Tell them where we've been, kind of let them kind of pick up where we've left off, I think was the thought on that.
Well, I was kind of more in the restaurants would probably be shocked, you know, around here when they have to pay the hundred, so.
Yeah, give them a leave-away time.
What we need to write, the consequences right now, and I don't know the code, I'm assuming, if the city health inspector finds something and then continues, and there's a consequence that we're able to enforce that consequence because of city permits and business permits and operating permits and things like that, or?
Because of our health.
Because of our health.
I would say the permit is not on that same, same way.
I guess whatever consequence the city is able to render on that business, it will be the same with the county, or will we need to write something into the contract or something for a city?
You know, it would be, it would be the same. If you do the next, do away with our, take away the, take away our.
It would all fall under the county health department. Yeah, and if a county doesn't have a health department, then it falls back on the state to do the inspections.
And like we talked about before, the vast, vast majority of cities do not do their own inspections. It's really almost all county, county regulated in the state of Missouri, so we're kind of unique.
Ready? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to new business, we'll talk about curbside recycling and spring cleanup. We did have to postpone the spring cleanup. The thought is that if we wanted to bring that back for the spring, that it could be done in what?
Mid to mid to late June. If we want to do two, if we want to do two this summer, this season, we could do one in mid to late June, to be the spring, and then we come back with one in September, October, and the fall. Or we just, or we just do one in September, it's all good for both of us.
I think we should do it too.
Yeah.
I like to.
Mid to late June, but curbside recycling, do we want to bring it back?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Preventing, yes.
Yeah.
Well, guys, I mean, it's all, the curbside recycling is very expensive.
Yeah.
And we are losing serious money on it.
People watch.
Forty dollars a ton.
Every time we do it, of course, to recycle it versus about forty dollars a ton to put it away.
So what are, you're saying it's a hundred and forty dollars a ton. How many tons of recycling? You're holding up four tons.
Average about sixteen a month.
About sixty.
It's around twenty, twenty-four thousand a year is what recycling costs, I believe, is that?
About twenty-seven thousand a year.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Well, there's a lot in it, that's for sure.
Well, we have additional cost of burning, you know, twenty-seven dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's just, uh.
We have additional truck, we have additional staff, we have additional fuel, we have additional operations.
That's a huge penny.
You know, recycling was a really great deal back years ago when there was a market. That was not a market for anyone.
Yeah, but it's something that people have reached out.
Oh, I've heard a lot, yeah.
And we wouldn't realize, there is still a cost if we throw a plant, so, so we would, yes, it would only be about ten thousand a year, instead of twenty-seven thousand a year, but it's what this community wants to do.
Is there a market for something? Like, we recycle glass there at the old Mosher's parking lot. Uh, there's cardboard, there's plastic, there's.
I think right in this point in time, there was a very large.
For anything.
Oh, these sites.
You think some glass is, you know, that's going into the waste in the campus. But the cardboard is all about nothing, a little bit of all about nothing.
Plastic, newspapers.
And especially if it's contaminated, if it's a really clean, wonderful store where it's just a hundred percent garbage, it might have some value. You throw some plastic into that cardboard, or some cardboard into the plastic, and it contaminates the whole of it.
Just really quickly, I'm getting some messages that people can't hear any of you that are kind of down low, so if possible, if you're going to speak, could you please make sure you go to the mic and, of course, try not to touch it unless absolutely necessary? Their sanitation, or sanitizers are up there as well, but we want to make sure everybody can hear what we're all saying.
Thank you, Courtney. So when would we start back up? We obviously would have to wait at least a week, because I've got trash in my can right now.
True, y'all.
So that's a problem.
Beginning next week, we'd be able to re-instigate, beginning Monday.
Okay.
Right? We could, we could, we could do the curbside recycling.
Okay, sounds like that's a go for unanimous.
Yep, thank you.
I think once we get going a little bit further, we could explore other avenues possibly on how we're going to pay for this, or give our customers other options that would, we could phase it out another way without actually just taking it away. But we need people to understand, educate the people on what it's actually costing the city, so maybe we can start implementing some fees or some other things to possibly reduce the recycling, maybe even do away with it. But just taking it away right now, after we've been offering it free for all these years, is just not the acceptable way to do it.
And I know I've talked to several people who say they want recycling, and yeah, we're willing to pay a little bit more for that privilege. So that, you're right, that's something we can look at in the future. What is it, like, one dollar a month for the container?
If you get the container.
Right, yeah.
If you don't get the container, it costs you nothing.
Which is a little unfair.
You don't have to have the container. That's your request.
Right. Well, we can think about that going forward.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a one on, you know, surveys, as you know, I preach about that. But I know Councilman Shiverdecker and I don't agree on this one, but I think it's time for a survey to businesses and the residents. If you want to keep recycling, it's time to put your voice in now, or the council will come up with another decision in order to offset it. But I believe people will be willing to pitch in a couple of dollars and see if they can. It's just my thought, it is a survey.
Yeah, I think so. I would. I mean, I'd like to recycle, and I would pay a little bit more.
I'm not a big recycler, but I would kick in two dollars more in order to keep it.
Yeah.
Councilman Braun?
I certainly think that people are willing to pay a little bit more for the recycling, and if that's what we have to look at, I think that's definitely what we need to, to take a look at. We have one world to live in, and this is it. And let's try to do our best as far as Fulton goes. I don't care about any other city, but Fulton should, should go that route. And just to make sure I'm clear, Bill, middle of, middle to late June for the spring cleanup, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the curbside will start next week? Recycling.
If you'll just talk about that, just a little bit careful, just don't let it, like, speak there or something like that, so middle of the public.
So we'll be looking for that mid-June. I, I think it'd be appropriate to get a motion and a vote on the recycling to start that back up.
I make a motion to continue curbside recycling until next, starting next week, and then spring cleanup probably going to fall in the middle of June, from what Robert just said.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. We'll move on to the utility payment policy that was changed due to COVID. Um, an update on that, what that's impacting the city. It's, it's getting pretty significant, and we probably just need to update everybody on that. Ms. Holschlag, if you would, come up.
I sent Bill the numbers on what the cost has been to date for, um, no shut-offs, waiving penalties, waiving the credit card fees. Too early to know about the sales tax. March was down five percent. A much, much larger increase going forward. Think the state of Missouri was down fifty-some-odd percent. It was in the news last week, so that's, that's scary.
I don't, I don't know if we're looking for any action on any of this this evening, but we, I just want to keep the council aware that, and inform them that some of the changes that we are making and implementing due to the pandemic are having a real cost to the city, and will have an impact on, maybe not, maybe not the operations of the city today, but as we move into the year. And I mean, kind of one of the questions that I have on this sheet is, how long is this going to last? When are we going to say, you know, everybody going to start paying the tolls again? There's a, there are lots of people out there right now that are, that are not.
Is this tied to the CDC ruling about utility cutoffs? Or with the state? Is there a state or a CD ruling that we can't cut them off during this time?
Well, the state, the state has issued some directives as far as utility cutoffs, but we're, but we're under the PSC. We are not under the PSC, so we're just kind of going along with the governor's order. We follow the governor's order on pretty much everything else on this process, so we're following it on this as well.
And I think one thing you also have to consider in addition to the question of how long does this last? Do we have a, will there be a resurgence? What's going to happen in the fall? Those are questions that no one knows. But many, many, many of the people who are behind are behind a couple months, because we haven't had shut-offs for a couple months now. So I think we're going to have to take a long, hard look at that and determine what our policy would be for getting them turned back on.
But have, have, have any of those people contacted about the current payment arrangement at all? They just?
Just don't pay.
Just don't pay.
But I will tell you, um, that doesn't surprise me. I'm sure there's a certain number of people who are perhaps taking advantage of the situation, but we have a number of customers who they just don't pay until the day before the morning of the shut-off. So there hasn't been that.
Yeah, ma'am.
Everybody's saying, hey, now our clerk.
Well, uh, speaking of, I watched a hearing this morning on TV, according to Dr. Fushy, he's going to, he pretty much promised us if we will see it back in the fall. You're right, we might need to really take a close look.
So when we just finally decide you need to pay your bills, there're going to be people out there who are going to owe a lot of money. And I think right now, we have policies in place that says you can get on a payment plan and pay over several months.
Typically, those policies only apply if you make that arrangement prior to shut-off.
Okay. Is there any possibility or thought to extend the number of months they can repay?
Based on the direction from the city council, administration will be able to set any policy that you so indicate is in the community's best interest, both for the, those customers that are current and those customers that are delinquent.
I think, I think that, I don't. I think that we need to make sure that we have, everybody is aware of there is a potential for a shut-off if you don't make prior arrangements in some way, shape, or fashion to what's going on. If you're behind, you better do it now, so it's not a big surprise.
So.
We would run ads, I think, in the newspaper.
So if we say, or if the city says, okay, as of June the first, you have to pay your bill. June the second, you start turning people off? What's the, is there?
That is city council's expression.
Oh, okay.
We will, we will take some, we will take some, we will take some later, you know, before, how you want to handle.
Okay.
No matter how you do it, it's not going to be a lawful decision.
Oh, no, it's not. What is the current process? It's.
Basically, shut off about, you could shut off about, right, right?
We shut off the end of the month, and then if you've made a prior arrangement, there is a second arrangement, shut off anywhere from the sixth to the eighth of the following month.
Okay.
And the, the shut-off date or time is like ten o'clock on the day to shut off, so if you don't pay by ten o'clock that morning, your utilities are disconnected.
So couldn't we make some kind?
Could, when you, you're having Johnson, you were there, you kind of set up your, you think you had news, could you come on some of that?
Right now, to put out the information that you'd be coming contacting and trying to make for?
If that's what you want us to do.
Well, I'm just saying, I kind of.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I'm just trying to get the two-month color for that, you know.
What if we set up a deadline, like the middle of June or whatever? Contact us by that date to make some arrangement. If not, we'll have to, you know, and then, I know it's going to be a, a lot of work and a lot of, whatever, but gives them a chance to say, okay, we've got a budget, we've got to pay this, and we've got to make arrangements by such and such date. Then if not, shut them off. I mean, you've got to have some type of, of plan.
So is there, is there a reason why we could not go back, do the windows open, uh, the boxes are open, and the credit card fees could not go back immediately? I mean, it's available to them to do now.
It is available to them, but just, there's unemployment's like pushing fourteen point seven percent or something. There's just a lot of people out there right now that are unemployed, and I think the, the intent behind waiving some of these fees is to, even though they're going to be getting behind, that it's allow them to have the dollars that they do have coming into their home, go for some of the other, other functions at this point. But any, and I, I would, I mean, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking we want to do this now. I mean, I don't want to be the first, first utility in the state to go out and say, we're going to, we, we probably don't want to be the last either. We want to take our lead from some of the larger ones and some of the other communities. But I just, the reason it's on here is not, I'm not looking for the, the policy or the concept or the ideas this evening. I just want to make you all aware that what we are doing, we are trying to work with the community and the citizens in what we believe is to be their best interest through this, through this pandemic issue, but that there is a, that there is a cost to the city and the community for us doing this. In a, in a normal situation, Kathy talked about, we do, we'll do a contract with someone who gets behind, and we'll, we'll write a contract with them that they have to stay current, and we'll give them three months to pay off their, their delinquent bill. Well, for them to be in that situation, it's, their bill's probably going to be in the two-month range, two to three months. They'll be behind two to three months, and we'll give them three, three additional months to pay that off.
After they pay fifty percent, they're past it.
But then, you know, in this situation, that the rate we're going, it's going to be three to four months, so I don't know that the, that the three months to pay off their outstanding balance is going to be reasonable. I think it's going to be longer than that, but I think we're also going to have to really commit to, if people don't hold the contract, that we have to, we will have to take some sort of action.
The, the way it works now, and the fifty percent for, will be probably an unattainable amount for some people. But if you do not, when you pay your fifty percent, and then a third is added to your bill each month, and it is implicit in the contract that if you don't pay on the fifteenth, then you are subject to automatic shut-off again.
Well, you kind of catch twenty-two.
I believe we're going to provide a pathway to folks. When we get to that point, we're going to offer maybe some type of, maybe let them jump into that level billing program, which is fantastic, and kind of maybe roll that into that. I don't know if that's an option we can think about.
We typically offer it to people who.
Who are behind.
Need some type of fees back.
So I think it's wise that we're getting this information out tonight, and as we move along, the staff will bring options to the council.
Quick internet search, it looks like a lot of the communities that suspended this only suspended it for the months of March and April, that those suspension disconnects began in the month of May. So I guess, I personally would be interested to see a plan developed by you and Kathy about renewing disconnects in June, and what type of plan and policy and payment plan, even if we need to extend it to four months to bring them back home. On, on, you know, just, you all come up with some sort of plan that would be fair to the city, fair to the individuals, and let us review that detail. I'm afraid if you ask for our input, you're going to get eight different inputs.
Today's the twelfth of May. We have eighteen days till the first to, to say we're going to start cutting people off at the middle or the end of June. That may be a little quick, Jeff. I'm not, I'm not opposed to working, but we have to give people a chance. And if we don't give people a chance that aren't working or that haven't worked to get back, I don't believe that's fair or right.
Very good.
But I certainly do think that we need to get it out in the newspaper. They need to contact us for some kind of payment arrangement set up, so I'm all for the payment arrangement.
And that was my thinking, John, was if they, if they brought to us a plan of what it would take to start this in June, then we could see just how aggressive that plan would have to be, how many people it would impact, what kind of money we're talking, and then we could look at, well, maybe we need to look at July or mid-July or something like that.
Okay, so we'll be looking at that some more coming up here. The next, probably in the next meeting, we'll have something for you to look at. Moving on, Parks and Rec, the funding, we've been talking about that a little bit. We've got, basically narrowed down to three options, two local options and one non-local, I guess you'd say.
All the way around.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 sorry. One local, two non-local, yeah.
Sue, do you want me to run through it for you?
Um, maybe just a brief, yeah. We kind of know, but the public may not.
Okay, one minute, I'll make it snappy. The, um, the local option is fifteen-year lease purchase arrangement, three point one percent fixed for the first ten, refinance for the last five. And I think for the purposes of what we sent you, we assumed the same rate throughout. We had to for comparative purposes. Stiefel has come up with a, an option from an out-of-state bank, and the first option is no collateral, fifteen-year fixed, three point oh-three, I believe is the latest interest rate we had. The next one is putting City Hall up as collateral for the construction period. Once construction is complete, the Parks and Rec building would be collateral, and that is at two point seven-five. That's it in a nutshell.
Now, from the emails we've got, Kathy, that's gone up.
Yes, the original.
Option two and three went up.
Option two went.
Option two went.
Option two was at two point nine two-five, and it went up to three. Option two was at 2.925, and it went up to 3.03.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it did.
And I, I think I sent a thing out telling what the original cost with Stiefel's was, um, an additional expense of $46,000, which reduced the savings on option two to like $29,000, I believe, and on option three to 105. I've not recalculated the difference between 2.925 and 3.03.
So what, option three is still saving 105 over the term of the loan?
Over 15 years.
Okay. Can Bill explain that? Um, option three and option two requires the $46,500 upfront fee or whatever it's called. Is that something that has to be paid in a lump sum?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Or can it be?
Upfront.
Right, but can it be put into the loan? So rather than a $5 million loan, it's 5 million?
I've never seen that done.
Okay.
They're talk, they're talking about five.
You could. I don't know why, I don't know why you want to buy that.
Why would you want to amortize that, you know?
Why, if, if, the answer to the question is yes, I believe you could.
Okay.
My second answer to that question is, I don't know why you would.
Well, the first problem is, we got to come up with $46,000 in cash.
Well.
And we're going to be strapped, just like we talked about, utility payments and sales tax and all the other stuff for cash.
Um, the thing.
The, the sales tax money in the bank would be able to be used for, for some of that. Which would then reduce for, for some of the other things that we want to spend that money on. But yes, that we would have, we would have funds for that.
Is the collateral over the 15-year period, you said?
City, City Hall would be collateralized for the construction period.
For the guest construction.
Yes, once the construction is complete, then part, the Parks and Rec, the Park, Rec Center would be the collateral.
So. So the numbers I ran, if we go option one, we're looking at $417,000 a year and change. We go with option three, discounting the $46,000, we're looking at $407,000 a year and change. So there's about a $10,000 a year difference in cost.
Only for the first year because the total difference over the course of the loan is like $29,000 once you net up at 46.5.
No, I'm discounting the 46.5. I'm just doing a four, a $5 million loan over 15 years. That's two different interest rates.
And I believe the interest rate difference on option two from option one was $75,000. And option three, the difference between one and three was 150 if you don't look at the 46.5.
You mean total cost? When you say 105,000, you're talking the total life of the loan over 15 years? No, I, what I'm talking about is yearly payments or monthly payments if we want to go, I even broke it down to months, but what's the yearly payment we're going to have to make on a $5 million loan?
I don't have those amortization schedules with me.
Well, I did, I.
You go, you go, Bill.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. If we, if we go with option one, the local option, you don't have to pay the $46,500, but we have to pay $417,000 and change every year to service the loan. If we go with option three, we have to come up with $46,500 off the bat, and we're paying $407,000 and change every year to service the loan. So there's a $10,000 difference in costs between one and three. That's what I.
A hundred and $150,000, 10 grand a year, that's correct.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Both of those numbers are a lot.
And the scary thing to me was the. The difference between one and two is 75,000.
The scary thing to me was the fact that at the 10-year mark, we would have to refinance and potentially, uh, get into a situation of a much higher interest rate. Right now, we're at historically low rates, uh, and for that to stay the same is pretty unlikely. And I talked to Kathy a little bit about that, that there, there would be a negotiation about the maximum.
Typically, there's a cap.
Interest rate that it could go to.
So it's probably not, I mean, I'm not, I can't speculate.
Right. So I, I threw out a number of 8%. If it were to go to 8%, and you guys all got that email out soon. Um, but, uh, that, that may not be, potential for that may not be there for that drastic of an increase. So I just wanted to get that out there.
All right, I've seen 16%, so.
We've, yeah, you're an old guy like me, we've seen it pretty high.
Yes.
So.
So there's, there's a big unknown in years. Um, had, had you seen this about offering City Hall as collateral? Is that something typical?
No, no. We have never been asked to, to put up collateral during the construction period.
Can we get into trouble with that?
We'll be sitting in Memorial Park Pavilion for the next city council meeting.
No, the basketball club, the rec center.
Given that the construction time is such a short time within a year, I don't think we're going to default on the loan, so we're probably okay.
So what we're really looking at is $10,000 a year from, from top to bottom.
And.
And the 46.5 for the fee upfront for the first year. I believe the difference between that total 15-year payout in interest, I believe the opportunity to work with a local bank outweighs that relatively small amount of money on a $5 million loan. I mean, we're truly talking about somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000 over 15 years for a $5 million loan? And to have an opportunity to work with a local banking institution on that loan and that lease agreement, all of that, I think, I think is, is the biggest benefit to sticking with option number one.
The only problem with option number one is now you're dealing with five years of an unknown interest rate. It could be 3%, it could be 6%, it could be 10%. We don't know. One, we haven't negotiated what the maximum rate would be, but, uh, we don't know.
And at that time, we could go to some outside institution if we thought that the, that the, that the amount of money was that much different? We could then, we can renegotiate it with anybody at that point. And we have opportunity. If we have a very successful rec center that brings in an income above our expenses each year, that's money we could put towards the loan, and we could have this thing paid off in 10 years potentially. I mean, it's, the what-ifs are endless for 10 years down the line.
When would the discussion to finalize the cap on the interest rate for the last five years, would that happen? Is there a way that we could have that discussion so we have some sort of idea before we make a decision?
I'm sure we can renegotiate the cap.
Well, it may.
The answer is, well, we know we can.
It would, it would, it may help us make a decision if we know that we can't go over a certain percent interest rate. We wouldn't get to 16 if we're capped at eight, we wouldn't get to eight if we're capped at five.
We will then get that number for you.
I believe that would be important to know, I totally agree.
I would argue for a 2%. An additional 2% for the cap.
I don't want to negotiate with you, Kathy.
But that may help, I mean, there's going to be a huge difference when it comes to the unknown of that five years.
I think we all need to look at it as if it was our own money, would we do it? What would we do? If it was my money, my house, my loan, would I do option one, two, or three? So I think that giving that information would be helpful.
I'm truly appreciative of the discussion the city councils had this evening. Um, I am going to, Kathy and I are going to proceed in investigating both options a little bit more, and maybe come back with something a little bit more concrete. I, I kind of, kind of from earlier discussions I had with somebody, I thought it was going to be kind of a, kind of a one-way deal. And I'm seeing that after talking to more people in the room that it's not. So we will continue to investigate both options, and we'll come back to you at, at the next council meeting. That should, that gives us two, two more weeks to, to come up with something. And, uh, we'll be able to get the cap, we'll be able to get some of the details on the other one, and, um, okay? That work, everybody? Thank you.
All right. And we're still good with our portion, paying our bills to where we don't need that loan in place tomorrow. So, so next meeting, we'll, we'll put our foot down and decide one way or the other. Try to, try to. Okay. Did the building now, the collateral in that one? What was that, Steve? I don't like giving the city all but a collateral. Oh, right, that's a little just scary, isn't it? All right, moving on to Parks and Rec discussion. Uh, this is just a kind of a moving target right now, Clay. You've put together a, a really thorough plan here, it looks like to me, appreciate that.
Yeah, last week, we sat down as a staff, and, uh, we came up with a plan on, on how we were going to operate our facilities and what programs we were going to offer over the next couple of months. Um, several of the items are very easy, meaning we could, we could change the decision tomorrow. Now, if you want the, if you want the restrooms open tomorrow, we can, we can make that happen. Um, if you want to turn the drinking fountains on tomorrow, we can make that happen very easily. Um, two of the items are very complicated, um, and the fact that they're, they require a little more organization, a little more planning. Um, the first thing is the youth baseball league. We wrapped up the registration last Friday, and I, I can tell you right now, the participation level is down tremendously. We usually average about 450 participants, we're around 200. So, um, I think some people are concerned about that a little bit, but I think there's 200 people that would like to get out and do something. Um, with those 200 people, we could probably put together maybe three or four age group leagues and have the, uh, the youth baseball and softball leagues. Um, I, I'd like the council maybe to provide some input or a decision on that because, uh, the social distancing requirements are, are difficult. Uh, we put in some pla, some things in place that, uh, would allow us to kind of keep people apart, but, you know, if three kids are running for a ball, they're going to get close together. So there, there's a lot of challenges associated with the youth baseball league. The other issue is whether or not we open the city swimming pool. Um, again, it's, it's very complicated because you're looking at a large group of people in a, in a small place. I, if we decided to open it, we would probably open it at shifts, um, possibly a 12 to 3 shift and a 4 to 7 shift. Um, that would give us some time to do some cleaning in between. Um, it'd also allow us to, uh, limit it, or limit the, uh, number of people that come into the pool. Um, I think right now, we can, based on the square footage guidelines that the state has provided, I think we can safely accommodate 71 people, and that, that would include our staff too. So, so we're kind of figuring on 65 swimmers. Um, there's a lot of other things we do too. Um, we've eliminated a lot of our programs, um, and some of the programs are later in the summer, so we're kind of, we're kind of waiting on those to see what we're going to do. But I think, uh, the big issue with the swimming pool is, uh, I think is whether or not we're going to be able to get enough staff. We usually, I think we had 12 or 13 lifeguards last year. Um, one or two of those are going to return if we open the pool. So, and it, it's not necessarily because of the virus, several of them are off at college or they're, they have another job or something like that. So that, that's an issue. I think if, if we don't have enough staff, then it doesn't matter what any of us decide, we won't be able to open it. So that's, that's a challenge that we're going to have to face. And, and we've sat down on a lot of webinars and a lot of Zoom meetings with different Parks and Rec professionals, and, and they're kind of all over the place on what they want to do. Nobody really knows. Um, everybody's kind of waiting to see what everybody else does. Um, several pools have decided to close, uh, Centroya, Mobley, Mexico, those are a few that I know of. Um, a lot of them are going to wait and see, Columbia, Jeff City, they're kind of, they're kind of feeling everything out. So, um, I, I don't know what the right answer is, um, but I think it's something we need to start talking about because we're probably at a point where either we need to continue to move forward with opening the pool or we need to just decide we're not going to go that direction this summer.
Clay, the, you were talking about 65 people, swimmers going to the pool at one time as a maximum. What would be the maximum normally? Or approximately?
Uh, I think, I mean, on a busy day, well, we, we can have about 150 up there.
Okay.
Um, like, when the YMCA camp comes on a regular basis during the summer, uh, they could bring 40 or 50 by themselves. So, um, if we host a swim meet, you may have as many as 1,000. Now, we, we are, we are 99% sure we're not going to do that this year, so.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't think, as far as our competitive swim team, um, there's nine teams in the conference. Four of those teams have already decided not to have a team this year. Um, we're scheduled to host the championships in July. That, that's probably looking at 2,000 people, so that's probably something we're not going to do. I mean, I think there's too many, too many burdens.
We'll see now.
Yeah, that's.
Take, take away the suspense.
I, I, I think the whole league is headed that way, but we're kind of doing like everybody else. We're, we're going to see what they do too, so, but I, I think that's where we're headed.
Clay, if, if the pool sets vacant for the whole season, is it similar to a, like a vehicle setting? Does it, is it bad for it to not get used and some of the equipment get fired up and ran?
Uh, yes, but I, no, our equipment's 40 years old. It's, it's going to have issues no matter what. It's setting vacant nine months out of the year, it's every, every April and May, we have issues that we've got to deal with. So we've been pretty lucky that, so far this year, but, uh, um, I, I don't think having one season off would hurt.
And we, we do feel like we would at least be able to get the splash pad open this year at some point.
Uh, our recommendation would be if we don't open the pool, that we don't open the splash pad. And that would, obviously, that could change come July or August. Um, splash pad has a longer season. We run it from May to October if the weather's right. Um, probably we can get the splash pad up and running in, in four or five days. So we, we can make that decision in June. Right now, we're kind of, we're planning on opening July 1st. But again, I think if you don't open the pool, then you don't open the splash pad because I don't think we can control the social distancing. I think you could have 80 or 90 kids down there on a, on a hot day, and, uh, I think that's just impossible for us to control.
So you're, uh, worrying on the pool, is that by Spade or someone that, uh, tracked for tracing? Names and phone numbers everywhere that come in this year?
Um, the, the contact tracing?
Yeah.
Um, that's something that's been talked about a lot in our meetings that, you know, that way, if, you know, obviously, if somebody comes in and they, three days later, they're sick, um, we can look at the list and say, okay, or we can provide the health department the list saying, these 45 people were here that day. And then they could contact whoever, whoever's on that list if they need to get tested or if they're showing symptoms or whatever they, whatever they do.
Could we go back to the baseball and softball, and I did hear some comments?
Back to baseball and softball.